I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open this commissioner's meeting for Monday night, January 21st, showing all three commissioners here, the county attorney, the county lawyer. So begin with Parkview. Carla, if you'd like to show us how this new piece of equipment works up here.
We'll see.
We don't know either.
We don't have a clue.
All right, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Carla G. Bird, and I'm the EMS manager for several of Parkview's communities, including Fulton. This is Tiffany T. Garden, your on-site supervisor, she's here every day. So just kind of go through some of the things that have been going on with Parkview. Here we go. So start with runs, patients, and mileage. So this is what we've done since we've been here. We've had 881 runs with 784 patients and traveled about 58,400 miles. So we're gathered, we're growing and getting more runs as we move forward. This breaks it down by transfers and 911 calls. It allows you to kind of see what we're doing with each of those and also kind of gives a snapshot of the rest of the Parkview 911 systems that are here. So for Fulton here, we've done 200 transfers and a little over 1,000 911 calls. Put that together. These are 911 response times. So I don't know if most of you know this, but a couple of years ago, really this last year, big time of the national changed from this national standard of being 13 minutes, 90% under 13 minutes, to 80% under 14 minutes. And so when you look at this, this is kind of how everything falls out here. So the way you read this is from zero to five is 12% of our calls are under that 13 minutes. When you put it with the 10 minutes, then we're at 61%, 82% under 15%, 16 to 20 is 93, and the 7% is over 20 minutes. Any run that is over 20 minutes, I have a complete breakdown on a spreadsheet. We look at it to determine what happened. Was the prop, was it just somewhere you can't get to? Was there an address miss, problem, mistake? Most of the time, I will tell you, is because multiple runs go out at the same time. Can't schedule 911 calls right to make sure they all come with, so that someone's available, so we'll have more than one run come in the same area. Cardiac arrests. We've done 20 cardiac arrests since we've been here. And of those, we had 11 of them were called at the scene after working. We were not able to get pulses back. We had four that didn't work when we went in. We've seen that they were definitely gone. We had five that we had return of spontaneous circulation. So we had five that we got pulses back at the scene and transported them to the hospital. And of those five, two were actually released from the hospital, fully intact. So that's 10%. That's double the national average. National average is 5%. So we're pretty happy with that here, in just a short period of time. Medication verification. This is something I'm very passionate about and very proud of for Parkview. This is Parkview's overall goals. Fulton's is very similar, the numbers. We're one of the first, if not only, EMS departments or teams within the state and really few around the country that do medication verification. EMS really is not something that they're known for doing. But our paramedics and our advanced EMTs have the expectation that before they give a medication, they want to verify and make sure it's right. In a hospital, what do they use? They use a scanner gun, right? If you're in there, how many times you got to give your name, birthday, as they scan your bracelet? We don't have those in the trucks. So we have to do it kind of manually. We ask our partner, can you verify that this is what I want to give? That this is fentanyl or that this is the medication that I'm giving? Or you can ask the patient if they're awake. Patients love that because then they know we're double checking. We ask the firefighter, or we're going to pull our protocol book out of our pocket and look at it. We're going to verify it. And we're at almost 99% that is documented verification. And along with that, our medication error, you can see is less than 1% across Parkview EMS. And that is not just medication errors that cause harm, that's any medication error that is documented. Pretty, this is something I'm very excited about because this is best practice for our patients. Roster positions. We are full, all staffed, all trucks are staffed. We just hired our last float position so that they can fill in when we have people that take time off. So I'm very, very excited about this. We've had all three trucks up and running for a couple of months now. And so, but now we even have our floater filled. They start Monday. So I, this deserves a dance. If I thought y'all would get up and dance with me, I'd have you do it. Because this is remarkable, this is exciting. As the sheriff told me, I just jinxed myself, but Tiffany?
We do a lot of training and education onsite because the only way for us to get better is to keep training. Some things that we do is we have a SIM lab come down, and this is an actual ambulance that comes with a mannequin that can breathe, can talk to you, can simulate real-life situations. They come down and go through training with all of our crews.
This mannequin has a baby.
Yeah, it's very interesting. We do patient care reporting charting education. Blake, on-site training officer thoroughly goes through all charts and reviews them with crews and makes sure that everything's being done appropriately. We have our protocol training updates. We're really on top of that. Each year, we go through the protocols and figure out ways that we can be better and we can do better. We have QA and QI and audit review at least once a month. And then we have 30, 60-day, 90-day rounding, in which I sit down with literally every single person and go over how things are going for them, what they like, what they don't like, how we as a team can be better, and areas in which they think that we can grow.
QA tracks quality.
Just a quick question on these trainings. Some of these include our local fire departments?
Yes, absolutely.
Is included on this?
We've actually put on some trainings where RFD members will come in and just sat in and gone through everything with us. And we have gone through, with some of the crew members, our ambulances with them, and just done scenario-based memory things, so that they know if they need to assist our crews, they'll know where things are at.
Additionally, this spring, we'll be doing an EMR, First Responder Class will be starting. And then in the fall, we'll follow up with an EMT basic class. So both of those are in the works to be named and things. We'd hoped started in the fall, but we didn't have enough participation to put on a class.
We also love being the community. Not only do we want to care for the members of our community, we want to engage with them in different and fun ways. These are all of the events that we attended, and we, each crew is either like an on-duty crew will come to an event. We also have other people come in and take the vehicle and just go out to engage with the community and be a presence and let everyone know that we're here and we're here to stay and to help as much as we can. And like Carl said, we have the EMR and EMT class.
We've had a lot of positive feedback on our community events. We have people come up to our medics all the time, and they come back and tell us how, you know, they came up and said they were so excited to see us and want to go through our truck. I know when we were in Akron a few months ago, there was, people just go up through our truck. There was just really a great time.
The, one of the events in Kiwanis was actually really neat because they set up, the truck set up baskets and had this little game that community members could just come up with and just to get involved and get into the truck and see it and to meet the medics and really get that personalization in, which is neat to see.
So just wanted to bring a story. This was just brought to me last week by one of their fellow paramedics. These two went out on a run to a home residence, took a patient home from Wood Lawn Hospital. And she didn't have any family or friends, she was an elderly lady. They cleaned her icy snowy sidewalk so she wouldn't fall, brought her mail in, took her trash out, sat down and talked with her for a little while. And I just wanted to recognize them for that. This is Brandon Ernest and Davis Watkins, because that's just going above and beyond, and that's what we want. We want to be a part of this community. We want to have everybody be engaged. The patient called, but had called and talked to one of the other on-duty crews who made sure and sent this to us, so we wanted to share this story with you. Any questions or anything that we can answer for you? All right, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
I know the kids at Caston talked about you guys. I've heard different ones. They enjoyed you guys being here.
Good.
You guys, the sheriff, we had several highway department. Appreciate you guys coming down.
That's a fun part of the job, is getting to go out in the career, talking about the fun things. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, permit updates. John?
John?
I love the beginning of the year.
You too.
It's kind of rough there towards December. I don't have any permits for you tonight. I guess it's too cold opening up, it's digging.
Can't imagine that.
But when it's not been so cold, you guys have been patching holes and unbrushed better, dealing with winter, and still working with our AMC cutting trees. We still got that going on. Wanted to talk to you about Bridge 161. Of course, that was awarded. We're waiting for a pre-construction meeting with, that was Port Construction. We're waiting to hear from them. Bridge 170, that was one we submitted for a bridge replacement for Federal 8 on the 8th and presented that to INDOT. Had pretty good feedback from INDOT on that, so I think there's a pretty good chance we might get an order.
Good.
Well, no, I think in March. Bridge 106, wanted to talk to you about it tonight. I sent you guys a copy of this task order that USI put together. We had USI do the preliminary engineering on it. I'd like to follow up with them on the design.
Has Holly looked at these, do you know?
I emailed it to her.
Okay. Did you see it, Holly?
Yes, yes, my friend.
I know Katie's here. Katie, you want to say anything about it?
Hi, great. This is just the continuation. We started on work with this last fall and decided, due to John's budget, to do it in two phases. So we're finished with the first phase and ready to continue on with design, which will then take you through bidding. So it's intended to be a community crossings project and is eligible for that grant funding for construction.
Our goal is to have this ready and to bid out on the second call, community crossings. We left some money on the table, come back for the second call, follow up with this bridge, and likely construct it in the spring next year.
You got match with funds?
Yeah. For $231,300.
Everything's, you like the looks of it, are you going with it? Any discussion here?
I'll make a motion to approve the USI contract for $231,300.
Okay, motion made, seconded, to approve the contract, to go ahead with Bridge number 106. All in favor? Motion carries three oh.
Do you need one, two copies, or what? He's got one up here. Do you want to get some back?
Yeah, I'll just take out. He had some signed it. I'll let him sign that, and I'll take it. I'll grab it.
Just got one signature, right?
Bridge 95, love bridges here tonight. Talking about Bridge 95 is the one on 250 East and my South Line Lake, I don't like it. I think I've got permits all lined up for that, so if the weather's fit, we'll be able to.
And go and put a covert in, right?
Yeah, big box covert. We'll be able to move forward with that. Community crossings, we have submitted the three roads that I have told you about, the 250 South, 550 South, and 950 South. And we're preparing bids for that bidding award, which they told me the other day that it might be in February when they announce the awards. Traditionally, it's been in March. They're trying to move things forward a little faster. But the INDOT recommended we go ahead and bid that contingent on the award, so that we get everything, continue to move quicker and more efficiently. So we're planning on having a bid opening on March 3rd meeting.
March 3rd meeting.
And then county wide bridge inspection, as you know, I put an RFP out for that. They were due on the 17th, and I think we got five proposals. And we're going to need to figure out who's going to score that with us. Or if you guys want to score it, that'd be great.
I think it needs to be you and John, I don't care who. You want to do it?
I'll do that too, I don't care.
Dave's going to do it.
We'll get with you. Got some free time, we'll sit down and go through them.
Okay.
Yeah, you and John know this better than we did.
And last thing I had tonight was just to tell you that the dump trucks, they're in their shop at WA Jones, and they're getting put together. Hopefully sometime in February, we'll get them.
If you're in time to get, got the snow, we're going, right?
I think we're done, so.
We are?
That's what everybody's telling.
Can we write that down, Gary?
I'd almost bet him on that one.
He probably would. Now, it takes snow and plenty to hurry, so.
Yes.
John probably would.
That's all I have for you right now.
Thanks, John. Anything else I need for John?
Thank you. John?
John?
Really, the only thing I have, we have a training this Saturday, we have two. 10 to 12, we have a storm spotter training, and 2 to 5, we have our radio HIM operators will be doing their ground operation, winter ground operations from 2 to 5. That's the only thing I've got.
Okay. What if we're gone? Really? 911?
Just a couple things.
Probably skip over and go to Travis.
No, no, I found it. Nothing too serious. I'm at the priority dispatch today regarding police and fire, so we have a definitive date of the kickoff meeting, which is February 4th. And that meeting's basically going to just show us the route and travel, what we're going to do for implementation and all the background stuff. So it was a good meeting, educational, we kind of have a good idea of where we're going there. Just having staffing issues, just because everyone's sick, or we've had an employee whose grandmother passed away, so just working lots of dispatch. And we're just in the process of meeting with Evans to get that console moved, so nothing that you need to know right this second, just getting dates fixed, that way we can figure out where we'll go.
Sounds good. Brilliant.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany.
Right along, yeah. Oh, man, I like this. I don't have a whole lot. I emailed out the reports last week to you. Any questions or anything on those? From the two-year comparison, there's just a couple of things that I just wanted to note. We were at 60% on warrants served, that's something where the guy's going to be pro act, you're seeing the warrants coming in, they're going out, and picking these guys up. Criminal arrests were up 20%, and then incidents were up 20% from 2023 to 2024, so some things are up. Obviously, the inmates being booked or released have went up, just because we're holding all these out-of-county inmates, so every time we get an inmate coming in or released, we have to do that, so you'll see a really substantial increase from that, and that's what that's from, so. This morning, we had 150 inmates, 78 of them were Grant County inmates, 13 were federal, eight DOC, and seven Howard County.
Is that about the most federal you've had?
It is, yeah. They actually might have picked up six today. I don't know if that was out of the blue, or if, I mean, with something, kind of a change in guard yesterday, so I don't, I don't know. I don't know where that comes, yeah. And we're contracted, hold up, I think 70 is what the original contract was.
Up to 70.
Up to 70, yeah. If it ever came to that, where they needed 70 beds, we'd start pushing some of these county inmates from other counties out, back to the counties, just because we make a little over double the money, whole federal.
What does the Feds pay now?
75 a day. And then they pay for all of the transportation costs, including mileage, so it's pretty good to have federal inmates, so. In December, we invoiced between the counties and federals $124,588, between Howard, Grant, DOC, and the federal inmates. Pause on the maintenance building. I talked to Chad this morning, they're waiting until probably February, they're ready for concrete, but obviously it's a little chilly, so they said Parkview February, if they get concrete done, and then keep looking away at that, so. Prosecutor's Office issued a release last week concerning our officer involved shooting. They consider the matter closed, I don't know if anybody saw that, just wanted to make sure that's addressed. We did do GPS in our two transport vans through a company called CoverTrak. We just thought it was imperative to govern all the squad cars and everything for accountability and liability, so we went ahead and we've got, we've got one installed, we've got the other one hopefully going to get installed this week, so. Working with the Health Department and the signed MOU, they basically want us to come out and assist them with some educational stuff with some gun safety. And in exchange, they got us three AEDs, which completes our fleet, so all of our fleet now has AEDs in all of our trouble vehicles, so.
Good.
That was what we were lacking, and I reached out to them earlier this, I guess last month. They said, yeah, we can work something out, so they wanted us to go out and help with some educational stuff, said absolutely. So other than that, that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
I'm good. Building looks good out there.
It does, yeah, it's going to be nice, and it's, I mean, we need it, so, yeah, we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. Let's see, a few things here. Just kind of going down the agenda. Yeah, okay, yeah, let's go ahead. Yeah, we could, we could skip up. Brad, you want to go mount up?
Sure. Just wanted to come and kind of give you guys an update. In front of you, you guys have a copy of the agreement. We started about a year or so ago. This is just a renewal of that agreement, there's no change, and we're not changing pricing, we're not changing anything. We don't recommend making any changes to anything for about three years anyway, because until we get three years of data, we don't have a really good trend line on what the employees are doing, so we don't like to mess with it too much. We'll give you some stats on just what we've been able to do in this first year. So part of the goal of the program was to see what we could do on helping divert some of the cost of the medical plan from the insurer just to the county, so that there's not as many claims, so that we can kind of flatline costs over time. So we were able to divert about $20,000 worth of claims that would have went to the insurer that didn't because of the program. And that includes about 104 physician visits. I think that number will consistently rise this year. If you look at the usage, it was really slow at the beginning of the program, as people were trying to figure out exactly how to utilize it. And now that they're kind of figuring it out, I think we've seen some increase. We hope that that continues. We're going to do another education, kind of bump for everyone that's under the program, because we want everybody who has high blood pressure, diabetes, COPD, any chronic condition, we want them going to the doctor a lot. Because we know that the more they go to the doctor, get regular checkups, the greater the chances we're going to prevent them from hospitalization or other issues. So we want these people to utilize this program. They can't use it too much. It's not going to cost you or them any additional money if they go to the doctor more often. That's the way the program's set up. So we're going to work on that, but we did have a pretty nice chunk where we diverted about $20,000. And that's just for the insurance plan. What we did on the opposite side was, one of your guys' goals was, some of the newer and younger employees with families that costed them for their copays and their deductibles and all those kinds of things, that was a challenge when you were trying to compete and getting employees with other companies. And so we diverted about $2,500 worth of cost to them as well. So those families, those new employees, those people didn't have to throw in that $20 copay every time they went to the doctor during that year, so. Pretty positive overall. Also wanted to let you know, we've had 88 people in the program get wellness checks in that last year. We had 20, 42 people show up in the spring for our Wellness Fair we did here, we had 24 show up in the fall, and then we had an additional 22 people go to their providers and get the wellness checks. So 88 total wellness checks for the year, which is pretty good for the total size of your population. Yeah, that's, I didn't know the total number right now, but.
Little bit over 100.
Okay, that's a, that's a really good rate of people getting those checks. So we'll keep working on it, see if we can bump it up a little more, but that's a really, really good starting number. Absolutely. In front of you, like I said again, is the same program we had last year. We did a one-year-at-a-time term. You guys didn't want to do a rollover, which is perfectly fine, so we can come back each year, do that. Like I said, there's absolutely no change in anything. Kathy, we met, what, last Thursday, I think? With Kathy and Christina, went over where we were at, kind of gave them that information as well, so I don't think there were any outstanding questions that we had to answer for you, was there? I will say, on a side note from this, we are working with Kathy on seeing what we can do to help with some of the other stuff, like the work comp things, and so we'll keep in contact and see what we can do to help with that. We're more than willing to see if we can help reduce your guys' costs.
We appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Okay, so all you need's an approval on this and a signature, right?
Yep, I think you've got the copy with our CEO's signature already on it, so that will be all we can do.
Entertained motion to approve the woodlawn contract.
Second one?
Motion was made, seconded, to approve the woodlawn contract, all in favor? Carries three oh.
Thank you, guys.
Good program, guys, I think. We paid the 35 bucks, as long as all you got to do is get a physical, one physical a year. Go to any woodlawn doctor you want to go to.
As many times as you want.
Many times as you want.
What was your name?
Brad Rogers.
Brad Rogers, okay, thanks.
Were you writing checks?
That's a good one.
Just wanted to spell it right.
Brad, do you notice HR, when we get to do hire, do they, are they fully informed on your program, or they come out to you to get versed on that or anything along that line?
HR does that on the hiring process.
Yeah, they would do that here. Now, we have no problem if you want to direct them to call Erin. Erin's our nurse that runs that, you know, runs the program on the day-to-day. She's more than willing to take a phone call or an email from anyone if you want to lighten the load on some of your staff, and she can explain the program to them, and, you know, you can go to any doctor at any of our locations. If you already see, I'm going to just throw out a name, have you already seen Dr. Ricketts and Argus? You can still go to Dr. Ricketts and Argus, it'll just be under the program now rather than under your insurance. So you likely don't have to change providers at all. But we can, she can give them all of that information if they want, if they need, we're more than happy to.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything you want?
I heard the headline.
I was like, what do I have to do at Woodlawn Hospital? I mean, it's great.
You're next on the list.
I have notes that I wrote myself about dated lists for Beeman Home for the next quarter, wanted to make sure you guys have that. Continuing to build that relationship with Beeman Home, make aware of the resources. So, one view, it's not a colored copy, sorry. Kathy, not a colored copy, sorry. So Rachel Art actually connected me with the new victim advocate individual. Her name is escaping me, but she's a lovely human being.
Me too.
Randy.
Yes, so I got to meet her, give her information, and that was a question that was asked by the Beeman Home Board if we had a victim advocate, what is the title officially?
Well, we got, well, Victim Assistance Program.
Yes. So they were pretty impressed when I went to the board on this last Friday to tell them that we had added that person, and then they looked at Marshall County and said, hey, do you guys have that too? And Marshall County said, I don't know, I'll check into it. So felt pretty proud of that moment for a second, just that we had the opportunity to be able to, they might, so, but yeah, so we're continuing to work with Beeman Home to bring the resources. to bring the resources. With the Warming Center, it's been interesting, because we had a couple cases of domestic violence. One individual did stay at the facility, and so that was kind of an interesting situation in which those two worlds collided in trying to figure out how to bring this about, so, and providing services and helping them. We also have this, so the Warming Center has been interesting, to say the least, Dawn has been more than helpful, so, I don't have these two years, so, but we are super beyond grateful to Woodlawn Hospital. I don't even know if Brad knows this, but Jimmy from Operations has actually provided linen for us, and Alan's been really great about that. Dawn has been beyond helpful in navigating all the challenges that we never would have expected. In addition, we've added a potential partnership with the Animal Shelter, because again, today we had an individual show up that had a support animal, and so we are in conversation with the Animal Shelter in understanding what that looks like to accommodate that need, so that we can get folks in the facility, so it feels like, volunteer coordinator Whitney Gates said to me recently, "Is it normal for me to feel like the problems come faster than the solutions?" And I said, "That is what every new adventure actually entails," so I have to give a shout out to her for her willingness to do this and not be paid for it, but she wanted, she said, she came to me, I said, "Don't come and ask me for a leadership development opportunity, because I would give it to you." So, she asked for something to do, and we gave her this challenge, and she has knocked it out the park. I have called Travis and asked him, everybody, I have to say, everybody has been beyond supportive and helpful in making this happen. We had some challenges with some unfortunate Facebook posts and other things that were shared that shouldn't have been shared, that have caused the attendance to be a little limited, but we did have one of the folks say to us, "Please do not give up on this idea, because this is so needed." She indicated that there were 100 folks that were out there that needed support, but were terrified to come, because they didn't understand what the process looked like, and were afraid to yet know if we were, what we said we were. And if we look at the history, they haven't always treated all the homeless folks as nice as they should have, so we are just battening down the hatches, trying to provide resources, and continue just to see what it looks like to provide that, so. So, that has been really neat, mostly encouraging because of the partnerships and the folks that we have been able to help. And last but not least, we were able to today take the next step on the transportation conversations, so Doug and myself and Julian Smith from the Chamber hosted a meeting with the employers. Only two of them showed up, but my car wouldn't start this morning, was a funny joke, on the day of transportation meeting. So, I anticipated that other people had challenges as well, but we did have a good conversation with the folks that were there. The gentleman from IUC actually came all the way to Fulton County and presented on behalf of the students, and we think we have a next step in which we can research, oddly enough, as I stated last time, it was the employers that had the biggest challenges with the transportation, and so looking at what we can do from a next steps standpoint to help address that. So, Julian and Doug, Beller and I will get together and kind of figure out. So, lots of things that we're doing to try to help in many ways. We are hopefully launching sometime, once the weather breaks, the mental health chats that we talked about in partnership with Foresty Health, to provide those opportunities. Becky Brooks is in charge of that. Davis turned the board now, so he's gonna be aware of what is there as our pastoral connection. We're members, so we're blessed to serve, but also a little other capacity right now, but we're making it happen, we've got lots of great people, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, thank you for all you did.
Anybody have any questions for Amy?
Thank you. Thanks, Amy. Okay, now I've got quite a little bit of paperwork here that we need to go with, so we have a temporary work from home need here through 21st of February, so I wonder if I can get approval for that. The Senate head has agreed.
Look that motion. We'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to put up the work from home, all in favor. Okay, motion carries. I guess I'll leave mine on that, I think I got the right spot. Okay, we got a couple requests for laptops for the Attorney's Office. Laptop will be used to perform duties while away at conferences and meetings. Need permission for that, Judge to authorize that, and also have one, or two of them for EMA, for the deputy directors, to have with them on site, so, and with mobile call app on as well. Any discussion, any questions?
They don't have county phones, do they?
Stephen and Sherry, do they have?
No, they do not.
Okay. I will make that motion.
Okay, for all three of them?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, all of those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Make sure they go through Christina Haas and check them in and out, because she has to keep track of everything.
Let's see. We have our deputy quarters contracts. Steve?
Holly looked them over? Yeah?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, we have three of them. We have four. Okay, for Marco Lehman.
For?
Gil Paris. And for Jerry Good. So, any discussion or books or motion to approve?
I'll make the motion approved.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the three deputy quarter contracts, all in favor. Motion carries three O. Next up, we've got appropriations contract for soil and water. I know we had kind of bypassed this one the last time, because it didn't have a breakdown where the appropriation is going, this is basically the same thing that they do each year, only this year has pretty...
All copies, so.
Just one old, do we have to sign all four?
No, just one.
Just one? Okay. You guys want to see these?
Nope, I've looked them over. Holly, have you seen them though? Do you have two?
They were emailed to me.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Kathy's been giving me everything.
And like with other Purdue things, they're in the same boat that they need money upfront, so that's what the request is for now.
That goes to us in the council vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we sign off of it to go to the council tomorrow?
And then the soil and water board as well.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah.
Motion due.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made and approved, all in favor. Three O. Get this to, where are they next to you? Okay. Skip all that, so we're down. We got funding agreements with Manton Training Center and Rochester Forest Council and Fulton County Animal Shelter. You guys had a chance to look those over?
Yeah, I think they're all the same as they was, aren't they?
I think so. Okay, do you have a motion for these?
Second.
Okay, approved, okay. Got the motion made and seconded, all in favor. Motion carries three O.
They're already appointed, they just want document.
Documentation signatures. Just have your signature. So, we got here the, to approve the tourism board, they're already under appointment by different, so we just need, we need board approval for this, right?
It's your board approval, or your board's appointment.
Yeah, it's my board appointment.
You've done the appointments, they just want their paper, they want paper trail.
Okay.
So, we probably don't gotta do nothing.
Nothing to do it.
Because we've already appointed them.
Appointed, yeah.
They just need to sign it. Okay. All right. Minutes, has a chance to look over the minutes?
Yeah, I didn't see any issues.
Approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor. Motion carries. Okay, we got transfer requests from Communications Office Supplies to Other Supplies for $344.90. We have office equipment for the county clerk, $250 office equipment to utilities. And the sheriff, we got from the Sex and Gender Registry of $2,000 to K-9 Officer for $2,000. Any questions or do you want to ease?
Nope, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve, all in favor. Motion carries three O. You guys had a chance to look over the claims?
Yeah.
I'm not proud. Huh? I'm not proud. Oh, pity. Okay, Fulton County, that was the last minute I put in. Okay, pity moves here for $1,732.59. I guess we're very sure. Make a motion pass claims.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Motion made and seconded, approve all the claims. Okay, we got miscellaneous claims here for $417,104.43. We got lit, $849,697.65. Utilities for $18,883.32. Here's the tourism board, $10,843, no cents.
No cents.
No cents. I mean, it was either come out right or whatever, and payroll for $334,986.41, with deductions of $21,074.37. We got travel requests here. You guys had a chance to look those over?
Yeah, full stack of them.
Full stack of them. So, yeah, can we read through these, or just make a motion to approve?
There's one in there for me, so I have the one in there for me, so other than that...
Okay.
I second it.
All right, all of those in favor? Okay, carries three O. All right, we signed these here in a little bit. Is there anything else that's got through all the claims, transfers, minutes, everything that you've got on here, Kathy? And all the paperwork up here, got a couple signatures you have to get. Any old business?
I don't.
Anybody out here? Old business? Any new business?
I don't.
No.
Okay, hearing done?
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait, wait, what?
I sent you guys all the 2024 wage report. This will be going to the Sentinel tomorrow, and I want it noted, there is absolutely no social security dollars on here.
So, don't post it.
Okay, so do we need to approve that, or?
No, just letting you know.
I guess no. Okay?
Yeah.
Anything else, Kathy?
Not for me.
I tell you, looking through all this, I greatly appreciate what you've done and what you're doing, and I know it's been a lot, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything, any other comments?
John. John?
I sent you some information this last week. I think county's kind of got a problem that nobody really realizes, and that's regenage of your employees. You have 126 employees in the county, over half of those are less than five years employed with the county. You have a huge rate of turnover in the county. You know, most of, about everybody in the county has signed a petition, I don't have that with me, someone else has that, but almost, which obviously they would, asking for the council commissioners to revisit the longevity. I've been here 25, 26 years, and I don't believe it's ever been discussed in the time I've been here. Right now, you get, I think, $200 after five years, and 300 after the 11th year. I mean, that's great, thank you, but compared to others, you know, we've rushed out, there's 19 other counties surrounding us, the average longevity pay in those 19 counties surrounding us is $2,075. counties surrounding us is two-thousand-and-seventy-five dollars. Some of them are a thousand, some are three-hundred, some are three-thousand. But the average is right around two-thousand dollars. You know, we put together, and I sent you a proposal, just as an example, you guys are welcome to figure out however you want to do it. But we set up an example of a five-year tier system, maxing out at two-thousand dollars. And if you was to have done that this year, for people that were employed five-plus years, you'd have seventeen employees, and if you was to pay them five-hundred dollars for five years of service, your payout on that would have been eighty-five hundred. You had twenty-five employees with ten years plus service, and if you'd paid them a thousand dollars, you'd paid out twenty-five thousand to those. The information I got, you didn't have anybody between fifteen and twenty-year range, but we recommended a fifteen-hundred dollar payout to those, but you had zero, so there was nothing there. You have fifteen employees that have twenty-plus years, and we was, this example recommended two-thousand dollars for that, that'd have thirty-thousand dollar payout. You add in your taxes and perf, that adds another eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, which brings a total, with the example we give, for seventy-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, if you was to pay out. So the council, last year, and I believe well for this year, budgeted thirty-one-thousand dollars for longevity. In 2024, they only had to spend fourteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-fourteen dollars of that budgeted money, so they're not even spending half of what they budgeted for. With the example I gave you, it'd be thirty-eight-thousand dollars over what they budgeted. But I'll tell you, retraining employees, and I imagine Travis can tell you better than any of us, because it affects him probably the hardest, retraining your employees, keeping them, for myself out there, it takes several years to get an employee acclimated to paving, to plowing snow efficiently, and retrain them year after year, is a hassle, and it costs a lot of money. I don't know what that number would be county-wide, but I bet you it'd be more than a seventy-eight-thousand dollars, or seventy-five-thousand dollars.
I agree with you.
I disagree with you at all, John.
I actually think it's a fair plan, I am.
We're just kind of basically asking for the average of, you know, our surrounding area.
So what do you want from us? Permission taken on to the council tomorrow night, with our blessing, is that what you would like?
If you guys believe it ought to go forward, then yes, we'd like to, you know, approach the council and talk to them about it.
Ryan, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'd see the council, I'd say.
Entertained motion to, have John take it to the council tomorrow night? It's our blessing.
So I move.
Second. Motion made and seconded? Three oh.
John, thank you.
Thanks, John.
You're good, thanks, John. Anything else? I received a phone call this morning, about seven-thirty. It was from a lady locally, and she said, I asked that you would, I want you to know something. I said, yeah, what's that? And she says, I have a granddaughter, had a birthday today, and she's going to be celebrating, she's going to be at a commissioner's meeting tonight. So, she said, if you could make note of that, and kind of acknowledge it, and so in her honor, we have a, I have a cake out here, we'll cut it for Brittany, who had a birthday, is it, her birthday is celebrated at the commissioner's meeting.
Twenty-five, I'm twenty-five.
She's got a lot of grandmas.
Anyhow, thanks to Grandma, you have a cake tonight.
We must have went to Casta if you think to thirty-five.
Anything else? If not, I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
I'm going to do that.